Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the September 18th City Council Meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence tonight, so I will be serving as Mayor Pro Tem. Deputy Council President Hall also has an excused absence, and Councilmember Joe will be participating remotely tonight due to illness. As a reminder, we do have remote aspects to our meeting, so staff and members of the public and tonight council members may be participating remotely via WebEx. Tonight on our agenda, we have three proclamations, followed by audience comments, our consent calendar, and our one regular business item. But first, we will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I am going to move over to the lectern, and again, we have three items of proclamations tonight. So, tonight, we're going to start with ID 1369, our Information Technology Professionals' Day proclamation. So I'd like to invite Administrative Services Director Autumn Monahan to the lectern. Chief Information Officer Gus Twana is with us virtually, and Tim Schaefer, IT Manager, you want to come up as well? Oh, fantastic, excellent. Wonderful. Well, then you just get to take it in person. So, whereas National Information Technology Professionals' Day is celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September to recognize the technical experts that ensure our computer and communication systems operate smoothly and efficiently, as they are tonight, and whereas technology continues to evolve and IT professionals help navigate these changes to provide efficient, inclusive, and communicative service to the employees and residents of the city of Issaquah, and whereas behind every technology stands, often silently and invisibly, IT professionals, technicians, analysts, developers, architects, engineers, administrators, managers, and directors who have been content to work behind the scenes to enable innovation and productivity, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic is a great example of Issaquah's IT team acting with foresight, preparation, and expediency, allowing staff to resume remote service to the public with limited disruption, and whereas the city of Issaquah wishes to show appreciation for its IT professionals. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize September 19th, 2023, to be Information Technology Professionals' Day in the city of Issaquah, and invite the community to join me in thanking Issaquah's IT Department for their service and outstanding contributions. Okay. Say anything? Oh, Gus, do you want to say something?
No, I just appreciate the support that we have from the organization. Thank you.
I will say, I mean, the silent and behind the scenes, but man, did it make a difference when we hit into the COVID-19 pandemic. Our city was on top of that because, as it says, they were prepared and gave us the opportunity to come out of that rolling so we could continue to serve the members of the public. I think, you know, other cities really struggled with that, and our city just stood on top of that. Really exciting. Okay, our next one, other exciting members of our staff, ID 1370, Human Resources Professionals' Day. I'd like to invite HR Director Stephanie Johnson, Senior HR Analyst Lauren Knox, Recruitment and Retention Coordinator Carmen Chamberlain, and HR Analyst Chris Schock to the lectern. Chris? Oh, I thought we had seen. Okay, fantastic. So, whereas Human Resources Professional Day is celebrated around the world to recognize the important contributions of human resources professionals, and whereas human resources professionals are vital to the function, efficiency, and harmony of a modern workforce, and whereas human resources professionals develop policies and procedures to keep the workforce safe, increase connection, resolve conflict, and whereas human resources professionals lead the workforce in establishing a safe, welcoming, and positive workplace by implementing trainings that advance equity, ensure compliance with local and federal laws, and advance personal growth and career development, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has changed the workplace at the city of Issaquah and around the world and impacted staffing, safety, health, and regular operations, and whereas Issaquah's HR team has adapted swiftly and consistently in response to ever-changing pandemic conditions, and whereas our human resources professionals serve the public by recruiting, retaining, and training the best talent for the city of Issaquah. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize September 26th, 2023, Human Resources Professional Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in thanking the Issaquah's Human Resources Department for their service and outstanding contributions. Yeah. We'll do a picture, and then we can debate.
I asked if they wanted to go, but they didn't want to do it. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the HR Department. We really do serve an outstanding city employee group. You know, the employee experience is something that we've really been working to improve in every way. We're a small team of five, but mighty, you know. Lauren, Labor Relations and Risk Manager, is here, and Carmen, Recruitment and Retention Coordinator, but, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention Chris, who wasn't able to be here, and then Michaela Berg also has joined our team this year. So just want to thank you for the support and thank all the city employees, because one of the things we really strive and look for is, you know, that servant's heart to be able to help that employee experience. So, thank you.
Nothing? No? We appreciate you, even if you're not up here speaking. The third and final proclamation is ID 1534, Diaper Need Awareness Week proclamation, and I would like to invite Carolina Leendo with Kidvantage to the lectern. I said that wrong, didn't I? Carolina? Okay, fantastic. So, whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families, and whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply, and whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over three years, and whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 8% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families, and whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infants and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs, and whereas the people of Issaquah recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities, and whereas Issaquah is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to low-income families through various channels. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do proclaim the week of September 18th to 24th, 2023, to be Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Issaquah, and encourage all residents to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Issaquah and the environment. Yeah. Want to say anything? Great, fantastic.
Hi, on behalf of the Kidvantage, I want to say thank you. Like you say, now one in two families has diaper needs. In 2021, we distributed 1.3 millions of diapers. Last year was 1.9 millions of diapers, and we have seen the families, the increase of need of the diaper. Like, people stayed at home because they cannot send the kids to the daycare because they don't have enough diapers to go with the daycare. So they are struggling to be food, diapers, rent, and bills. So, thank you.
And before I leave, I also just want to take a few moments to recognize the founder of Eastside Baby Corner, which is now Kidvantage, Karen Ridland, who passed away this past August. Eastside Baby Corner began in 1990 in Karen's house, and she was a pediatric nurse practitioner that grew the idea of something that started in her living room with small donations into a really mature organization with an annual budget of over $5 million, full-time staff, hundreds of volunteers, supportive community. It's now grown into multiple cities who all get the benefit of what Karen started. And so Karen, as we say, retired in 2012, but she really continued to serve as the Executive Director Emeritus and as a lifetime member of the Board of Directors. So last year, Kidvantage distributed over $4.4 million in essential supplies for children in need to almost 12,000 households across the region, all because Karen started something in her living room because she saw the need. Karen passed away on August 20th, 2023, but her vision and the work of her lifetime obviously lives on with Kidvantage, and the city of Issaquah is just really grateful that we had a community member that saw a need, did something about it, and took it to the level that it is today to address all of the needs of the community. So just wanted to recognize all of her decades of service. Okay. So, tonight, the next item of business is audience comments, and we actually have an audience tonight, which is very exciting. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, go ahead and raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and didn't get a chance to sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. So Clerk, I believe we have a few people signed up to speak, so I'll move on. For those making comments, please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, virtual attendees will unmute the microphone, or you can step up to this front lectern and press the button so that the microphone turns red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. We've got a timer right there. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, really are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes the comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time, whether virtually or in person, to address us. So Clerk, can you identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Victor Bello.
Members of the city council, administration, thanks for letting me speak today. I bring to you a proposal with a package that I delivered earlier. Apologies to the virtual attendees for not receiving one, but this is about a proposal for comprehensive traffic calming measures in our small community on Lewis Street. There's three streets that are heavily trafficked. When the front street slowdown happens, people try to cut through. On the weekends, there's a church in one of our streets, and all the churchgoers speed through those streets. The, also, being so close to the high school, high school students trying to get there quicker, try to cut through our street to go through and speeding up. Us personally, we wait for the bus in the corner of Lewis Lane and Lewis Street, and we see multiple times people speeding through there, and there's no sidewalk, so we're sometimes having to stand on the street, or when it's not raining, in the grass. Also, sometimes delivery drivers are speeding up. What we are requesting in the proposal that is presented to you today is a few things, including installation of speed bumps in the various streets to slow down drivers, an exit lane in the northbound front street south between 96th Street and the 6th Avenue Southeast. One of the biggest things that we've seen, and I know that there's been an accident or an overtuned vehicle of a churchgoer, because they're coming with the speed of traffic, sometimes 40, 45 miles an hour on Front Street, and they try to make the turn into Sixth, and they don't realize the steep curve that is there, and we've had some close calls with our residents being run over there. Also, maybe some slowdown in children at play signs, because we do have a lot of children in our community, weirdly about 20 old boys. We don't know why, but so is the case. And they're playing in the streets, and sometimes accidents may happen there. And also, those streets are at, right now, 20 mile-per-hour speed limit. We want to see if we can reduce that to 10 miles an hour to avoid any possible accidents in the future. If you turn to the third page where there's a map, it shows the places where we request some of the speed bumps to be and where the location of that exit speed ramp, and the fourth has some pictures of the area, which is, I believe, owned by the city and currently just a bunch of trees. So thank you for giving our proposal some thought, and I, well, before I use the rest of my time. IT, fantastic work. I enjoy watching the stuff online. Awesome. And HR, I was part of a commission not long ago, and amazing help from you guys to get our job done. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And as we had discussed previously, we don't have an opportunity for comment and response, but we've received it. We'll work with the administration, make sure we get back to you guys. Yeah. City Clerk, do we, who's the next sign up?
Tanner.
Good evening, council, city administrator. Thanks for having this forum tonight. My name's Tanner. I'm a corporal and a detective with the Issaquah Police Department. I've been employed there for nearly seven years now. Today, I am representing IPOA patrol officers and so on. For the last five years, the department has strived to get a fence installed in a parking area we call the East Lot, just behind us here. And I am here to advocate for that fence and educate you guys on some of the concerns that we have safety-wise. So, as most of you know, police officers are targets, targets like regular citizens, we're targets of vandalism, we're targets of assault. You'd almost say that we're pretty easy targets because we drive around big black-and-white vehicles that can be seen from several hundred feet away. Me personally, I've seen that our vehicles in the lot have been damaged from being keyed. They've been, tires have been impaled, paint has been stripped, decals stripped, catalytic converters stolen. A few years ago, there was an officer who was getting ready in his rig, and a vehicle had rushed through our parking lot at a high rate of speed. He was pretty agitated. It escalated into an incident with that officer where an altercation took place, and that person ended up getting arrested. Say that a gate probably would have, or a fenced area would have restricted that from happening, at least in the parking lot, maybe back in the street somewhere. That's for another time. Additionally, we have loitering through our parking lot every day, all day. People come from Memorial, come from Sunset, got in the corner on Second, traffic coming through our lot all day, little kids, and we can't see them. If we're in a rush and we got to go to an emergency call, you shouldn't have to be looking for a little tiny elementary school kid in your parking lot where you're expected to be wanting. So it's just a safety concern, not only for us, but for other citizens that are just coming through our parking lot. Something you may not be aware of, but a little while ago, a pipe bomb was placed under a patrol vehicle on the shoreline. Luckily, no one was injured, but the bomb was detonated, and it blew up the car, causing 25K worth of damage. It sort of goes further on the fact that we are targeted, and it's no more apparent than today. Further, something that sort of hits close to home is, three days ago, in LA, an LAPD officer was stopped at a red light. A suspect just pulled up right next to him, executed him, shooting him in the back of the head. That person was apprehended, but when we come back to the station and we write reports in our parking lot and do those sort of things, it'd be nice to have a sense of security, to have a place that we can write. It's not in the station, because we have to take our laptops out of our cars, come to the station, put in a docking. Be nice just to be in our car. If we need to respond, we can go and be focused on what we're doing there and not have to be 360 at all times. People can say that lights and cameras will fix our problem. I can attest, as a detective, surveillance is not always a solution. You're not going to hit every single angle. There's going to be glare, there's going to be weather, something, and we don't have the staff to sit and watch cameras all day. They're going to be responding to 911 calls and things of that sort, but cameras and lights are not going to fix this. It's going to be a fence. So my request to you is to please consider putting in a gate, a gated fence for us, for our safety, but not only just the officers, but there's plenty of record staff and other personnel that work at IPD that park in those lots, and it'd be nice for them to just be able to come to work and leave work with that sense of security, because we do bring our arrestees to this facility, and we release them from that facility, so they're seeing our patrol cars, our POVs, personal vehicles. And that's all I got. So thank you for your time. Thank you for consideration. Have a good night.
Thanks, Tanner. And Clerk, next sign up?
Taylor.
Hi, thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Taylor, and I've been a dispatcher with IPD for almost two years now. I'm also here on behalf of IPSA, our union. My priority as a dispatcher is radio traffic with the officers, taking 911 emergency calls from citizens and monitoring the jail cameras. There are currently over 50 cameras in dispatch that we have to monitor at this time. We're adding another 45. It's going to be over 100 for dispatch to take in, as well as our business line calls, and processing all of the court-ordered paperwork. It's an extremely demanding position. Adding even more cameras to this to be monitored on the list of growing duties is not an effective solution. It's a reactive solution. It does not protect our police department employees. Cameras have more blind spots than not. We have cameras currently in our parking lots that are not always reliable because technology fails, and it's, like Tanner had said, unreliable or unreadable for suspect information, and it does not prevent unsolicited access or harassment of our employees. Personally, my first year here last summer, I walked out into the parking lot at 0600. It would have been my night shift. I was getting off, walking alone in the parking lot. There were two subjects under cars closer to the fire department. I was in the middle of the parking lot, walking to my car, happened to have an officer coming on duty, pulled in at the same time as I'm absorbing what's happening. They were stealing the catalytic converters. Had that officer not pulled in, I don't know how things would have escalated as I was walking alone and caught them in the middle of a crime. As well as, there is another story with two of my coworkers leaving out that parking lot, out to, they heard yelling. By the time they got close to their cars, they could see that there was a motorcycle parked in between both of their vehicles. They could not get to their vehicle safely. They had to walk around and get into their cars in a creative way. They called it into dispatch. Turns out, it was a stolen motorcycle with felony warrants with the subject, so he ended up getting arrested, but he was parked between their vehicles. Third one is, a pregnant dispatcher was walking to the parking lot, was cut off by an intoxicated male subject. She was unable to safely get to her vehicle and could not turn around due to the way he cornered her. Thankfully, an officer, again, pulled into the parking lot right at the exact right moment to get her safely to her vehicle and de-escalate the male, who was intoxicated, didn't know where he was. It was a really unfortunate situation. We are also, for context, a large majority of other agencies across the state require a secure parking area. We are the only jail that doesn't have a secured parking lot in the entire state. It is our industry standard. Other agencies near us, such as Bellingham, Snowpack, Snoqualmie, Redmond, South Sound, King County, Bothell, Norcom, and Vallicom, are all secured. So that's what I have for you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Taylor. Appreciate it. Clerk, our next one?
Mark.
Hello, city council. Thanks for having me. Mark Fancher, been with the city of Issaquah for about 20 years now. Similar to what you've already heard, got a lot of different run-ins and experiences. Myself, I've had issues with inmates that recognize me, that hang out in our parking lot. Once walked out, had an inmate leaning on my vehicle, said, "Yeah, I thought this was your car," and we had a quick exchange, and luckily, they went their way. We had a female officer in the jail a few years back that had to get restraining order for an ex-inmate that kept waiting for her out in our parking lot. This was a common thing for some odd reason. Once they get out of jail, they would walk out and hang out in our parking lot, where our personal vehicles are, where the police park. We've had a few different attempted escapes. We have multiple vehicles pulling into our Sallyport. Sometimes they have to exit in the actual parking lot and walk them down, so it's a safety concern for the transporting officers. We did have an inmate escape once from running up our Sallyport and got loose in town and ended up in some residence backyard in their shed. That could have, you know, gone badly. Luckily, they caught them, but if we had a fence in place, that would, you know, they wouldn't be able to get out of the parking lot. We also have had concerns with, you know, if we ever do have a real natural disaster, you know, earthquake, something like that, sometimes we're pushing 60, 70 inmates and actually take the time to be able to handcuff them and get them outside, because to evacuate the building, we have to take them out to that parking lot area slash basketball area. If that was fenced in, we wouldn't have to be as concerned with getting everybody properly secured before getting them out there. If it was fenced, we can get them all out there, make sure everybody's safe, get them all secured from there. Again, like Taylor just mentioned, seem to be one of the only facilities that is not gated. You know, again, we've had, we have multiple agencies that come in and book people in our facility, not just Issaquah and Snoqualmie. There's been, you know, times where they're transporting high-risk inmates that even know we're a misdemeanor jail. Some of these people have felony convictions, they're going to court for other matters, and they've voiced their concerns with not feeling safe and secure by exiting the vehicle and walking inmates down our Sallyport or bringing them out to the parking lot area, because sometimes random people from the public will walk up to them, ask them questions, and they're in the middle of, you know, trying to transport somebody either to the hospital or court or whatnot. So it's a safety concern for everybody. We've also had concerns with, we have inmate workers that we take them out once a day to do trash runs, you know, dispose of trash and stuff like that. We sometimes monitor their phone calls. There's been concerns of sometimes friends or family trying to plant drugs in our parking lot or, you know, trash cans, because they know that inmate workers will go out there and do trash once a night at some point. So there's been concerns with that, and we've had the issues with drugs, and, you know, we want to make sure we keep that out of the facility. So that is pretty much all I have. So that is pretty much all I have, but I'm definitely, after 20 years of working in this line of work, like you mentioned, we are getting more targeted, and we have had issues with our personal vehicles, obviously, and we're all concerned. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Fisher?
Mike.
Evening, City Council. Sergeant Luck with Isco Police Department. I've been with Isco for, this is coming up on my 10th year that I've worked here. I'm not gonna go too in-depth, because I'm gonna be talking about exactly the same thing, but just to list a couple of the things that, like, officers I've spoke with are concerned about is, the need for the fence for overall security has already been talked about. It's a huge thing. Like, we talk to officers constantly when we're training, especially our new officers, that at night or during the day, if you have time to stop and do paperwork, you have to do it someplace that's safe. We do have a couple options around town, like an annexed building and stuff like that, but it would be extremely nice if we could just go to our parking lot and take care of business. There's so many things that we need to be able to do, like putting equipment in our vehicles and things along those lines, where if we're not in a secured location, it's just not the greatest circumstances. Couple of the, like, instances I wrote down is, our parking lot has been, and this is more recently, but being used as a bathroom by people coming from the meals program. There's one female in particular that we've been watching, because she uses the spaces between our vehicles to relieve herself. I know this was already stated, but families with small children cutting through the parking lot. We drive big Chevy Tahos, they're hard to see out of, especially, like, down low. It would be catastrophic if a child was hit in our parking lot, just like worst-case scenario. Like the gentleman with Lewis Street was talking, rush hours, we have constant traffic cutting through. We have, in the past, like, gone out and, like, kind of attacked that problem ourselves, but we can't put officers every day at rush hour in our parking lot, stopping cars and writing tickets. It's just not practical. Other places we need to be. Tanner stated, cameras can only do so much. In all my time working as a detective, cameras are great, because it gives you a picture, but if we can't identify people that are causing the problems, it doesn't really do us a whole lot of good. The last thing I want to bring up, this was a personal thing of me. When I started in Isaguas, like, when I was going through my field training program, I, like, came back to the office one night, parked just momentarily to run inside. As I came back out, someone had thrown a cinder block through my patrol car's window. So I just throw it out, like, if that would've happened in a secure parking lot, we wouldn't have that problem. So I hope you guys will consider everything that's been said by the police department tonight. I know that Isco was a great place. We have outstanding support here. So I just want to say thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Fisher?
Tom and Kelsey.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Wayland. I live on the Lewis Street neighborhood property, too. We actually own two properties on that, one on corner of Lewis Street and Sixth, as well as Lewis Street and Lewis Lane. And I, we both, we've lived on both properties, and we've both, we've lived with, we now have two boys, but our first was young, and we experienced the church traffic all the time. We took our own measures to try to slow down that traffic with the little, like, slowdown hurdle people. And in short, it just becomes something that they just, it's wallpaper. And so our measures, so what we did to try to continue to mitigate the problem was, we parked our car on the side street instead of our driveway, because it just skinnies up the street to slow the people down. And really, what's prompting us to be here today, and I'll probably get a bowshug, because my kid, my now-youngest was almost killed because of, she wasn't even going that fast, you guys. Probably was 15 miles per hour. But on Lewis Street, there is blind spots, especially in the fall, when there's foliage and it's out, it's growing. And it happened with my first son, but I was out scootering with him, and I was close to him, but if that car would've been going one mile more, or I wasn't one foot closer to him, it could've been trouble. And so I'm really requesting, like, the speed bumps could be a big mitigator, but the other thing, too, along with that, is the speed bumps can slow people down, because it also happens at 6:00 AM when the high schoolers are going there for their, before, I don't know, group. Yeah. And I walk my dog early in the morning, when it's, and it's now getting dark out, and so it's always a concern, just being on that corner, because my kids, thankfully, you know, being protective, I can protect them, but a week and a half ago, it could've been different. So, yeah, all the things that you're saying, we would love to have those measures. It's two small, it's three small streets, and it can change the world.
Tom, multi-decade City of Isaguas resident, husband of Kelsey and dad of two young boys. I think just for context, important to know, we're talking about no more than two blocks of duration before there is the church, or before there's a stop sign. And you have cars for those two blocks that are traveling in excess of 40 miles an hour, which obviously, there's no need to, there's no need to go 40 miles an hour to travel two blocks to church. There's no need to travel 40 miles an hour to reach from front street to a stop sign. So I think, again, context, if you look at the map that Victor provided, there is no through streets. It's all dead ends in this neighborhood, and so just, I think, context is really important to consider when you look at what we're asking for. Anyone that's entering our neighborhood is going to a destination within our neighborhood, or using it as a through fare, which is less than ideal, obviously, in a small, quiet neighborhood. So I do think, as Kelsey mentioned, it's not a matter of if, but when. An unfortunate incident occurs, and I think some simple, budget-friendly measures would mitigate a lot of that risk. So thanks for your time, for your attention, and for your consideration, as a matter.
Thank you, Tom and Kelsey. Fisher, who do we have next?
No one else has signed up to speak. We have two virtual attendees, but I don't see that either of them are indicating a desire to speak at this time.
And we have all these lovely people in the room with us. Okay, go ahead, and I will gladly ask for people to come up. Go ahead.
Good staff folks, appreciate you being here. I'll never say I'm happy to stand in front of a podium or a lectern and talk, but here we go. I just wanted to add a couple words in support of the email I sent to you and various other groups, including the Development Commission and Planning Policy Commission and Parks Board and Environmental Board, on the topic of culturally-modified trees. And it just, I don't want to repeat it, but I just wanted to kind of, in case anybody was on the Ethernet, I wanted to share kind of the broader community that this seemed to be a relevant topic. I really didn't know, and still don't know anything much about the topic. Just sharing a brief definition from Wikipedia, which might not be the most authoritative definition, but a culturally-modified tree is a tree modified by indigenous people as part of their tradition. Such trees are important sources for the history of certain regions. Term is used in Western Canada and the United States. So first of all, the topic is broader than just Isaguas, so I just wanted to think bigger. I just had this kind of gut response of what we need to do, but it's bigger than Isguas, what we can do to reach out and, from county and regional bodies, state-level legislation, but things we might want to be able to do. I understand there are certain work packages that are in progress with the Parks Board for historical trees and preservation, but I just think we need to look broader at that, so that all boards, and I want to just kind of elicit your response or encouragement to what is we can do, how can we become better informed, how can we support the legislation? So, again, not want to repeat what I said in the letters. Please, let's kind of think together what we can do to better support this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else want to take a moment, chat with us? No? Okay. Well, we always love hearing comments from the community. We heard from Victor, Tom, and Kelsey about neighborhood traffic calming. We heard from four members of the Isco Police Department about the need for a fence and their personal experiences with that. And Steve just talked to us about culturally-modified trees. So as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time. You can email us. The email address is citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And the next item of business is our consent calendar. The mayor has noted that she doesn't have any remarks on tonight's consent calendar items. I'll just take a moment and see if any of the committee chairs or chair designees would like to report out on any of the consent calendar items. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. IMC 18.404, Form and Intensity Regarding Zoning Table Update, is Item H on Consent. This was reviewed by the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee on September 6th, and the committee had a few questions. One was if it was reviewed by our attorney, and it was our city attorney, and we also clarified that this is a correction to a, an issue that was detected in the code, but really, this change makes the code compliant with the intent of the code, and so we had no concerns, and we unanimously voted to approve this. And that's, that's the only item that went by the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee.
Hi, anyone else? Okay. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? They have. Okay. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Okay, is there a motion? Yes, Councilmember Hunt.
Council President, a move we adopt the consent calendar as presented in today's packet materials.
Second.
Okay. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, the motion before the council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes, let's see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, six and oh, unanimously. The next item of business is our regular business item, AB 8691, the Preliminary Platt of High Street Collection at Isco Highlands. This is a quasi-judicial item, and given that it is quasi-judicial, we'll be starting off with an appearance of fairness disclosures, so I'd like to invite City Attorney Rachel Bender-Turpin to walk us through the disclosures and to present this item.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Rachel Bender-Turpin, City Attorney, here to present this item for you. Let me, oh, thank you. Thanks, perfect. Okay, we're here this evening for, to consider the Preliminary Platt for Shelter Holdings, also known as IHIF commercial, and company based out of the Isco Highlands. Go to the next slide. Decisions on preliminary plats are quasi-judicial decisions, which means that the proceedings in which they are reviewed need to be fair in fact and appearance, similar to a courtroom setting with a judge. It also means that ex parte communications with proponents or opponents of the project regarding the particular subject matter of the project are prohibited during the pendency of the proceedings. The test for an appearance of fairness violation is whether a disinterested person, having been apprised of the totality of a decision-maker's personal interest in the matter being acted upon, would be reasonably justified in thinking that partiality may exist. This would apply to decision-makers who have personal interests, have prejudged the issues at hand, or have other form of partiality that would disqualify them from the proceedings as unfair. Next slide. So with that, I'm gonna ask a series of questions, and I'll wait a moment for everyone to, for anyone to respond affirmatively. If no one responds, I'm going to assume that that's going to mean that everyone answers that question no. But if you have something that you would like to report when I ask these questions, please hold up your hand or speak audibly. I'll make sure to look up.
And Rachel, just take a moment, since we do have a virtual council member. Councilmember Joe, if you are going to declare anything in this, if you would just go ahead and come off mute and say it, so that we can make sure, when the time comes on that, just want to make sure we acknowledge that. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. With regard to the outcome of this particular proceeding, the Preliminary Platt for the IHIF commercial property, that is the High Street Collection, do you have a personal interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome? I am not seeing anyone raise a hand or speak. We'll move on to the next question. Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome? And I do see a hand from Councilmember Joe.
Good evening. Many of you know that I work for a member organization concerned with building, and the proponent, Shelter Holdings, is a member of the organization that I work for.
Councilmember Joe, I'm gonna ask you a follow-up question related to that, just to ascertain the nature of the potential conflict or lack thereof. Do you receive compensation that would be based in any way or part on the outcome of this approval or lack of approval?
Well, I think that the member would really like to see a positive outcome here. I don't think that they would blame me or put the onus on me if there wasn't an outcome they didn't like, but at the same time, I do work in the Government Affairs Department, and we work with this particular member on a number of issues and on, what would we call it, a builder's council as well, kind of on a monthly basis. And then on the kind of next question, we did file an advocacy brief in support of Shelter Holdings, so I just want to put that out there as well for people to be knowledgeable about.
Okay, thank you. Next question, do you have a familial, social, or business relationship or connections with any of the parties or non-partings who have an interest in the outcome? I believe that Councilmember Joe's last comments probably are responsive to this one as well. Is there anything beyond those which are noted on the record? Okay. And the next question is, do you have any special knowledge about the substantive or the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause you to prejudge the outcome? Not seeing any affirmative response there. Will there be any prospective employment for you or your family as a result of this Not seeing any affirmative answers there. Do you own or control property within 300 feet of the subject property? No affirmative answers there. And have you had any ex parte communications with proponents or opponents of this project regarding this subject matter? And no affirmative response on that one. Question is, well. My final question here is, do you believe you can sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of proponents and respective positions of any opponents of the matter? And I'm not seeing any affirmative responses here.
I believe we should all be affirmative on that, right?
Yes, sorry. Yes. Well, let me, let me just ask that. Can, can I just get a yes from, or an, let's just do a affirmative response of everyone there?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Damas. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Yes.
And Councilmember Joe.
Yes, but certainly open to further discussion on the next page of the presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, now it's time for audience questions. Does anyone in attendance wish to challenge the participation of any of the council members based on the appearance of fairness doctrine and their answers to the questions? I'm not seeing anyone in the physical room in attendance. City Clerk, is there anyone online?
Give me just a minute here.
If you have an objection and you are virtually attending, please raise your virtual hand or type objection in the chat window.
Give me just a minute to check the chat here. Bear with me for a moment. Okay, I can confirm there is nothing in the chat window, and I don't see any virtual hands raised.
All right, I believe with that, we're done with the audience question portion. All right, on to the substance here. This is a site depiction of the preliminary plat that is under consideration this evening. Each of these highlighted blocks is a block portion of the plat. There are five blocks total, each with two individual lots in each block. Next slide, please.
And Rachel, do you think you can give us a sense of where we are? If I understand correctly, we're in the western portion of the Highlands. If anybody's familiar with where Starbucks, this is across from that, across Ninth Avenue, and you've got several items there in what is basically right now an empty lot.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If anyone's familiar with the Isaguas Highlands, this would probably be an empty lot that they've seen up there. The rest of the area is fairly developed, and you're correct, this is right off of Ninth there. So, this decision is long in the making this evening. The preliminary plat application for this project was submitted back in August of 2017. In March and August 2020, there were a number of delays between getting the plat application in and having the plat go to the hearing examiner for a decision. It finally did in March of 2020. It was then continued, thanks to the outbreak of the COVID pandemic, until August of 2020, where it was concluded. The hearing examiner took about eight months to make a final decision on the plat, and he denied the plat application. That denial was then appealed to the city council, who then did reverse the hearing examiner's decision to deny the plat, but approved the plat with conditions that the applicant took issue to, as the plat conditions did not fully recognize the full extent of the applicant's vesting under the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement, which had since been terminated by the city council. It was terminated in 2018, so it was terminated shortly after the preliminary plat application was received. So, the Highlands DA was indisputably in effect at the time that the plat application was received. There was another cause of the lengthy delays in this case is a great deal of litigation that the parties were in together, and all arising from the city's processing of their development applications for this project, one being this plat. So, these matters have been pending before various Washington State Courts now for several years, with the outcomes of each individual case sort of dependent on other pieces of the case and other court outcomes, all related to this particular applicant. Well, in last August, August of 2022, the Court of Appeals issued a decision in one of the matters that had made its way up to the Court of Appeals, and that decision ruled that all of the applications that the applicant had made were in fact vested to the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement, including certain site development permits and administrative site permits that the city had previously not considered vested to the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement. The trial court then, in July of this year, issued an order requiring that the city council approve the plat with conditions that specifically underscore the applicant's vesting to the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement and conditions that are consistent with that decision of the Court of Appeals in that matter. Next slide, please. So, this proposal itself, as I said before, it creates five blocks. There are two parcels per block for a total of 10 legal parcels created. There will be six tracks for access and utilities, and it will also include a trail connection on the western edge of the proposed plat. The proposal also reaffirms that the plat is vested to the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement, and then it vacates the prior conditions of approval that were inconsistent with the applicant's vested rights, and then it opposes conditions that are consistent with the applicant's vested rights and the Court of Appeals' decision. It also clarifies which plan set is the approved plat. These are Exhibit 1 to the staff report. It provides for various easements and dedications as shown in those plans. Just make sure you scroll in really far, because it's very tiny language on those plats, and it acknowledges that the city has water sewer service capacity for the plat. It allows for the plat to be phased, so constructed and phasing, as long as infrastructure is in place and construction plans are provided in advance. And the applicant has five years from the date the plat is approved, plus any extensions that are authorized under the law, to record their final plat. The options for this evening are to deny the preliminary plat application or to approve the preliminary plat application but with newer different conditions. These are alternative options to just simply approving the plat as recommended in the staff report. However, either of these alternative options would violate the court's order, which dictated approval with specific conditions. Because of that, my recommendation is that you approve the preliminary plat application, PP 170002, with conditions as set forth in the city's September 18th, 2023 staff report, which is attached as Exhibit A to the agenda bill.
Excellent. So, at this point, does council have any questions? Seeing none, checking Councilmember... Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I move to adopt the IHIF Commercial Preliminary Plat Application, PP 17-00002, with conditions as set forth in the city's September 18th, 2023 staff report, attached as Exhibit A.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? No? Okay. There is no discussion. The motion for council is to approve the IHIF Commercial Preliminary Plat Application, PP 17-00002, with conditions as set forth in the city's September 18th, 2023 staff report, attached as Exhibit A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, six oh. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item of business is committee and regional reports. And so, I will actually start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Now, just one brief announcement. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on September 27th. Materials can be found on the Cascade Water Alliance Board website, as well as the agenda. Thank you for listening to my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Thank you. On September the 8th, I attended a joint meeting of the Eastside Transportation Partnership, the South King County Area Transportation Board, and the Seashore Transportation Forum that was held at the Puget Sound Regional Council in Seattle, and also remotely. Attendees received reports on PSRC's climate action goals, particularly as they pertain to transit, and on Metro's fleet electrification program. On September the 14th, I chaired the Eastside Human Services Forum meeting with elected officials and staff from Eastside City's school districts and nonprofit human services providers. We reviewed and discussed the proposed 2024-2029 strategic plan, which will be on the agenda for adoption in October. Eastside Human Services Forum is planning two forms for this fall. The first is regarding funding policies for nonprofit grant-making. And the second focused on lowering the barriers preventing... that are currently preventing youths who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color from accessing needed human services. We also welcomed our newest member, Jenny Alderks, who is a Bothell City Council member. And then finally, this Wednesday, the Regional Transit Committee will hold a remote meeting at 3:00 PM, and the only agenda item is an annual review of Metro's strategic plan and strategic plan dashboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Council President. On September 6th, the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met, and we had two items. The first one was Item H on Consent this evening. That was the amendments to IMC 18.404 Form an Intensity Regarding Zoning Table Update. So, I already updated the council on that one before we approved it on consent. And the second item was ID 1404 Comprehensive Plan Update Housing and Land Use. We had a discussion on how the state laws and the county laws are impacting our process and how those get worked into the update. We also had a conversation about clarifying what we meant by character when we refer to neighborhood character throughout the document, to make sure that that is clear that it's referring to the shape and form of the buildings. And we also had a conversation about clarifying some of the items where we talk about needing to prioritize things. Specifically, there was an item that talked about prioritizing affordable housing on city-owned properties for surpassing, and we requested that there be more policy-specific language so that council can consider specific actions that would allow us to prioritize affordable housing for those properties. I have one upcoming meeting as well, and that is the Salmon Recovery Council of our watershed, which is Wyra 8, will be meeting September 21st. And we have several items on our agenda. One is that we will be approving the 2024 Budget and Work Plan for Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council. We'll also be discussing our state legislative priorities, and we'll have an update about our artificial light at night project, which is a longstanding and very important project where we are reducing light pollution, especially on Lake Samamish, and that helps the salmon survive. So, that is... I will report back after we have that meeting on this Thursday, and that's a very important project to Isaguas specifically. So, I will report back with more updates.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on September 12th. We had two agendas on... or two items on our agenda. The first was the review of the sewer master plan, and there were two policies that we were discussing around maintaining. One was about maintaining the sewer system capacity, and we agreed that influence infiltration We agreed with the recommendation from the administration on the impact threshold. We also agreed with the developer capacity impacts, where there is a significant impact on sewer system capacity as a result of development. We also took on a discussion of Policy Number 3, which was fat, oil, and grease or fog management, and the committee agreed with at least a one-year retroactive clause for installing grease interceptors in some of our non-compliant locations. The committee also received an update on the draft Intelligent Transportation System Plan. We were impressed with the plan, and we are recommending the acceptance of the plan, which will be coming to the council for acceptance on October 16th meeting. And that concludes my report this evening.
Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did not meet in September, which is disappointing, not sure why. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee, which is the coolest of the council's committees, is meeting tomorrow at 6:30 here in council chambers. We have a rich and deep agenda. ID 1454 ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan will be presented by Dale Markey-Crimp. ID 1531 Pioneer Program will be Jen Davis-Hayes, our Economic Development Manager, along with Michael Stranger, Senior Planner with Arch. And finally, ID 1527 Affordable Housing Capital Funding with Jen Davis-Hayes again. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall has an excused absence for my regional report. The Growth Management Policy Board met on September 7th. We discussed potential changes to non-voting seats. Didn't end up approving that. Asked for a little bit more information to kind of make sure we have some good representation on there. And then we did recommend the approval of the Pierce County Countywide Planning Policies Certification. Next meeting will be held on October 5th, and that agenda has not yet been released. The Affordable Housing Committee meets this Thursday, and interestingly enough, as the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee is going over our housing element, we're actually, as part of AHC, doing a review of every city's housing element in their comp plan and certifying them and all of that. This is the first time this has ever happened, so Redmond and King County actually volunteered to go first, and so, we're doing the review of their housing elements and how the King County staff have responded to that, and they're making some really good recommendations. So, looking forward to seeing what that process is like. And then we'll also begin reviewing our 2024 work plan and start a first touch on legislative agendas. So, that concludes my report. Now, I'll go over to the mayor's report. There is an executive session to be held after this meeting to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren B. The item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated following an open session. Oh, utility bills. New online bill pay options. I am so excited for this. And it says in here, "I'm excited to announce that the city has added new online bill pay options for water, sewer, and stormwater utility bills. Residents can now sign up for our online portal to link their accounts and pay with additional payment options like credit cards. Residents can also utilize the new quick pay option for those who don't wish to sign up." So, for more information on either of those, go to isaguawa.gov/utilitybilling. It's actually really easy. I did it earlier. It's great. Upcoming community events. Recycling collection event this Saturday, September 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Eastside Catholic High School. The city will hold a hard-to-recycle collection event in partnership with the City of Samamish. These events are intended to support our community members in accessing recycling for materials that otherwise may end up in the trash or be taken to the dump. These events also support our community goals to increase our waste diversion rates by keeping recyclable materials out of the landfill. Please see our city website for more information on what will be collected at Saturday's event and any associated fees. We'll hold another collection event in October. Also coming up, September 30th is the last day of the farmer's market. A reminder to all that our final A reminder to all that our final Issaquah Farmer's Market of the season will be held September 30th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Pickering Barn. We would like to say a big thank you to Kelly Deanne and the entire team of park staff and volunteers that produced such an amazing market season all season long. Also, a big thanks to great vendors and Issaquah residents and shoppers for coming. It takes both to make a successful community market. Also throw in that the city council is going to be there with our own booth that last weekend from 10:00 to 2:00. Looking forward to talking with everybody about how much they love the market and, you know, a few other things. Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. In partnership with the city of Issaquah, local nonprofit The Circle will host an event to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month at the Issaquah Senior Center on Sunday, October 1st from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We invite you to come and participate in an art workshop with local artist Maria G. Casey to enjoy live music and eat delicious treats. This event is free and fun and for all ages. Please see our city website for more information on how to RSVP for a community celebration. Next item of business, we've got an informational update. ID 1508 Parks and Community Services Department Summer Highlights. And so I'd like to invite Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling to present this informational item.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. Good evening, council members. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. Thank you, Tisha, for running the presentation. So I'm really honored tonight to have a chance to share with you a number of highlights from this summer from a very hard-working Parks and Community Services Department. I appreciate the chance to do this because in highlighting our work plan, our work plan directly comes from your, one of your primary policy documents, and that's the budget. And so much of our programs and services jump right into program delivery and don't necessarily come back to you all with policy discussion. So it's a, it's an honor to be able to just share with you some of what's occurred this summer. Next slide. I was about to change this slide on my, it's not working. All right, so I thought I'd sort of walk through our five divisions, our five work teams, starting with recreation. An immensely successful summer. Our summer day camps, which has always been very, very popular, not only are direct and general summer camps, but a number of specialty camps that we've done. We had 880 campers over the nine weeks of summer. Thank you as well for the additional recreation coordinator and allowing us to bring back adaptive recreation and so many of our Special Olympics programs. Great to see really a full program menu this summer for both of those. We welcome Callie, who is our new adaptive recreation coordinator, who's just doing a fantastic job. Our summer sports camps, very, very popular. It's pretty clear we are making our way out of the global pandemic with over 1,200 campers through a wide variety of camp offerings. Again, we partner with many, contract with many different sports providers in providing these, these summer camps. Concerts on the Green, though we had to rain out. Our eighth and final, I'm looking at Councilmember De Michele, who probably attended a number of those. We had to rain out our eighth and final concert, but of the seven, we easily had over 8,000 attendees. Just an immensely popular summer season at the Community Center Lawn. And real kudos to Kirsten, who's our recreation supervisor, both in overseeing some of our events, but as well as the Senior Center. Speaking of the Senior Center, what a welcoming place our Senior Center has become. It doesn't seem that long ago that we were going through a pretty intense community conversation on how to operate a Senior Center that was in a really hard emotional state in 2017. But to see the amazing welcoming place it is, the wide number of volunteers and programs we have going, over 33 trips and hikes that we took. Great partnership with the Isqal Alps Trails Club in leading some of those hikes. It's really become a great place. I might also note with the passage of the King County Veterans and Senior Levy, we will be receiving some assistance, some contribution, much like we did the prior six years. So look forward to, as that contract gets put together, we'll be bringing that before you and be able to highlight what that's going to mean for us for the upcoming six years at the Senior Center. Next slide. Continuing with recreation, our two other facilities, the pool and the Pickering Barn. Zach Leeson, our pool manager and the pool team have, the Booms Pool, so immensely busy year-round. Over 900 participants in our, just our summer swim session alone. Gearing up for this fall as we welcome back a bunch of high school teams in competitive swimming as well as swim lessons and community swim, the pool really is a hopping place. Mentioned earlier, farmer's market, so glad you're going to be able to attend that final Saturday. What a great season this was. We average 73 vendors every Saturday. We average 3,500 shoppers every Saturday. I want to give a kudos to our partners at Costco. Allowing us to use the parking garage is a tremendous efficiency and a real win for our farmer's market. Another really interesting data point, we surpassed our year-to-date sales total. We set a year-to-date sales record four weeks ago. 1.4 million as of August 31st with, I should say, four weeks remaining with four weeks to go. And we already hit that record. Kelly Deanne and Tavi, our two full-time staff down there, as well as some terrific volunteers and part-time staff, just do a great job of pulling that together. You'll notice another photo there. Kelly Deanne is a bit of a star. She was recognized by 425 Magazine as one of the 40 under 40 in the hospitality category. Yes, that photo in the upper left is from the magazine itself, and there's not many who can pull off pink shades, but Kelly Deanne can. If you know Kelly Deanne, she's, she's great. Her leadership, her innovative work is really beginning to make a real difference at the Pickering Barn. Next slide. Transitioning to our arts team, Amy Dukes and the Arts Commission and Creative District have been very, very busy this summer as well. We had our chalk art festival in July, over 450 participants. Always a great colorful event that really transforms the Rainier Trail into a canvas of chalk art. Shakespeare in the Art, we welcomed our partners at Woodno Theater Group for The Tempest. Over 300 attendees for that evening's showing. Some work the Art Commission did this year that's a little bit different than prior years. We instituted an arts and schools grant program. We've, we've often provided grants to schools, but we often folded that into our arts application. It's such a specialized niche as we work with schools and some of the things that they want to do with arts here with our Issaquah-based schools that we launched, same funding. We just took a part of the funding and had that grant program happen this summer for the 2324 school year. And some great response from our school partners and that being a really helpful approach for them as they plan their school year. And then Jacob, Jacob Two Trees. We welcomed Jacob just a few weeks ago. Our troll down on the Rainier Trail has really proven to be a, really a great example of how public art can really mesh with who we are and our ethos as Issaquah. Jacob represents a lot of what is important to Issaquah in sustainability and taking care of the environment. I want to give just a big shout out to Amy Dukes. You know, Jacob didn't just show up at the, at the trail. This has been something we've been working on probably since 2018, 2019, and really positioning Issaquah to be a recipient of one of the five sites in the Seattle area. All along, we felt like this, again, is art that reflects Issaquah. And it's been a great journey, and it's been really exciting to see how the community has, has taken to Jacob. He's forming many fast friendships already. Not to be outdone, our human services team is continuing to do amazing work. And thank you for your support, council. What a thrill it is to say that we have opened our first shelter here in Issaquah. The emergency housing program is up and running. Through your support, we are now, in partnering with Motel 6, have our first housing program, 12 rooms. We're partnering with our Behavioral Health Team as well as police. We currently already have 11 participants in the program. This is a program that really looks at cutting edge as opposed to a typical congregate shelter. We really partner with our participants in helping them transition out of homelessness. It's a program that really requires our participants to be continuing to progress in eight really critical life skill areas, including employment. All of them are on their way to currently being employed or getting a job. We have got some great opportunities even within the department. One or two of them will be working part-time with our park maintenance staff. Others are interested in applying for some of our work through other areas in the Parks Department. The staff of three people are just doing a great job and really look forward to this fall being able to report out some of the outputs that we're beginning to see from that, from that program. Our Behavioral Health and Homeless Outreach Program continues to do its work, really, really important work. This is work that is reflected on the dashboard that's on our, on our website that we keep updated. Been a very, very busy summer. One thing I would point out as we've been a couple of years into this program, it really relies on, and it's great to see even within the department, the collaboration between our behavioral coordinators, our park ranger, our park op staff, definitely the police department, all working together and really meeting individuals where they're at, meeting them compassionately, letting them know the options that they have available for them, and pointing those individuals towards those, towards those options. So continued great work this summer. I say great work as if it's easy. It's not easy. It's incredibly hard, incredibly hard work that the staff do. Another place our human services team really intersects with individuals and where they're at in life is Community Court, a great partnership with our, with the municipal court team. Marisol Visser does a fantastic job of really serving as broker and facilitator of the Community Court program. Seven new participants have gone into that program this summer with some great outcomes and success there. The human services team partnered with our team at the Community Center as well as other staff. I know Tisha played a very big role in welcoming week that we had on September 8th. Over 500 residents came and enjoyed that evening at the, at the Community Center and the Community Center Lawn. Would also point out a community resource fair that our human services team and all of our human services providers, especially those focused in youth. We held a resource fair in conjunction with the chalk art festival. Wow, it's a tongue twister. But just a great way of, within the department, looking for ways that we can collaborate with events and, again, serve and meet all our residents in Issaquah. Next slide. Transitioning now into our, really our stewardship of our open space. Our park operations team has been hard at work this summer. A few fun facts. When you think of what, what is this, what is this space that we maintain, that the park ops team maintains? And imagine this is sort of your lawn. Sometimes residents think, hey, you know, I mow my grass, I weed my beds. How hard can park maintenance be? Well, your lawn is 52 acres of turf to mow, seven acres of landscape beds that the team maintains. They've been doing a really good job of really putting together these last two years a terrific work plan that's beginning to show results. Few other interesting facts, 12,000 bags of trash were collected throughout our park system this summer. 100,000 doggy bags have been provided at 37 waste stations throughout our trails and parks. Our park ops team supported 240 picnic shelter rentals at all of our picnic shelter facilities within our park system. A great volume of work that that team often makes look pretty, pretty easy and pretty simple, but it's quite complex. So happy to welcome aboard Dan Hints. Thank you, council, for our first urban forest supervisor. Excited to say we've kicked off our urban forest management plan with a consultant partner named Planet Geo. Dan has a great internal team that's going to be working on that plan. I'd point out, within that plan, we'll be looking at culturally modified trees. We've already had a conversation with the Snoqualmie Tribe, and they're extremely engaged and excited to be part of that urban forest management plan project. We're also going to be, as one of our goals with the park board earlier this year, was it's time to really review and renew and update our heritage tree program. So look for that to be happening this, this fall and winter as well. Another really, really fun fact to present, over 22,000 trees have been planted in city parks and open space. That's year-to-date. That's not just this summer. And that's not just by our staff. That's through a number of contractors, contracted projects, volunteer events. But tree succession planting is real. We know if we want to keep our urban forest, keep our public lands and the trees within our public land and the forests in our public lands healthy, we need to be replacing trees on a regular basis. And speaking of volunteers, thank you again for the volunteer coordinator inviting Taylor onboard. We've had 40 green Issaquah events hosted this summer resulting in just about 2,400 hours of volunteer work. Slide, not to be outdone, our park planning and development side of the house has been really, really busy as well. Pedestrian parks, some of our big capital projects, the pedestrian park, Senior Center Plaza Project is moving really well into design. We're a couple of weeks away from submitting our permit application for that project. Hillside Park, speaking of, we have submitted our permits and well into and going through the permitting process on the Hillside Park project. Namely, just two weeks ago, August 31st, we had the Neighborhood Environmental Meeting. We, as the applicant, were there, Community Planning and Development hosted the meeting. So we look forward to continuing that permitting work, both here with our city permits. We've also initiated our permits with Department of Ecology on that project. So we'll keep you apprised as that works its way through this fall. Also in design and nearing a permit application is our dog park at the Community Center in Rainier Trail. This was one of the sites, as you recall, that was probably our most popular pop-up dog park site. It's where the current pop-up dog park is. That project is probably also a couple of weeks away from the design being completed and our permit application being submitted. Our park system plan update, it was adopted in 2018, needs to be updated in 2024. That project was kicked off this summer with some focus group discussions. We're going to have a survey going, community survey going out this fall. Thank you. I know myself and the consultant team have had a chance to chat with a couple of you before you went on August recess. We'll be reaching out and having some conversations with you all as well to really get and understand your goals as we head into that system plan update, really in earnest this fall and winter. And lastly, I want to welcome onboard Robin Spear, who's in the back, our park planning manager. Robin started September 1st. Really excited to have Robin onboard. Brings a great wealth of both private landscape architect and public landscape architect experience. And she's really hit the ground running in so many ways with these projects. Would also want to just recognize Hasanti Piasena, our Business Operations Analyst in the department, and Rick Still, our Park Operations Manager. The two of them really assisted me in keeping these projects moving forward this, this summer as we were in the midst of transitioning with, with new staff. So some great things happening there. I think last slide, just to thank you. Thank you for your support. We really do a lot of different things in this community, obviously, but really the common threads that exist within this department is we invest in people and we invest in places. And it's really done through an amazing, amazing diverse set of professional staff that it's. it's really an honor to work with and not to mention the many partners. I don't know that there's a, a single program, service, capital project that we do that does not involve one or a handful of community partners. So with that, thank you very much for letting me have the time.
Thank you, Director Watling. I know this is only informational item. Anybody have any questions, comments? Councilmember Ray, then Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks, and Jeff, thanks for the presentation. I am a weekly attendee at the farmer's market. I mean, I think they're annoyed at seeing me every week, but I got to tell you, it is the best farmer's market around, and I think that's a lot to do with the work that Kelly does. Every time I show up, she gives me a briefing on how many vendors are there. She knows who's doing what. She knows how they're doing. She's very concerned about their success in this, this arena, and I'm just like, super impressed with her ability to drive the business, to understand the, the vendors, and to make this a great experience for everybody who comes. So thank you, thank Kelly, and it's, I love it. I, I mean, like I said, I, I go nearly every week. I think I missed three weeks this year, and it's, I almost spend way too much money, so I'm doing my part.
Thanks for those words and, and for your, your business. It's a great vibe. It is just, it is a great place to hang out.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Watling, for all of the excellent updates, and I'm very excited to see about the urban forest management program and the developments in the Human Services Department. So excellent work, and thank you. I have small children, and we have benefited from a lot of the different programs that parks have in terms of learning how to swim at the pool and participating in a lot of the really excellent summer camps. On the flip side, it, these programs sell out really fast, and so I, I have also heard from other families. I'm a working mom, I have two young kids. We are there right when the programs open, and we are ready, you know, fingers poised on the keyboard to get in, and sometimes they're sold out, you know, seemingly with that advanced planning. So they're great programs, but my question is, you know, with that preface, that I think families really could use these services, and right now, I know that there are some frustrated families out there. I'm wondering what we can do to help address this real need for, for working families in our community.
That's a great, great question, and, and certainly something we've been talking about with the team and talking with administration is, is are there some creative ways we can add some capacity to some of these really, really popular programs? So we're exploring that very thing to see what we might be able to do in 2024 to, yeah, increase some, increase some capacity, address, address that through, you know, generated revenue from the program. So that's one way, one way we're looking at it.
Would we be able to get a update on what kind of methods are being, you know, thought about or, or tested to the council at some upcoming date?
Absolutely. Any, any and all of that request would be coming to you for the 2024 budget, if, if that's, if that's a route we're, we're going to go.
Okay. And do we have a sense of how much need is, is out there for these programs?
Well, we do. Summer Day Camp, just for one example, Camp Qua, which is our big general program, we averaged a waitlist of 60, 60 on the waitlist. For a camp that is, that is 50 to 60 campers a week, so, yeah, we know whether there is a need.
Okay, thank you. And I would also caution that probably people that, some people probably don't sign up for the waitlist, they just move on to other options because other options are also sold out, and so that may be an underestimate, if anything, of the need, but thank you.
Understood.
I'm actually going to go to Councilmember Joe, and then Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you, Director. I think I've talked to you privately about some of the compliments that I've had for the Parks Department, and I want to make those public right now in, in terms of my praise for the great work your team does. Just on a very small, seemingly small issue, I was coaching baseball this, this spring, and, you know, I'll go to other parks, and the Sandy Cans are horrible. But in our park, Tibbetts Park, I, I personally witnessed one of our contractors or one of our staff take about 35 minutes to clean out a Sandy Can, just in fantastic fashion. I know it's a small thing, but it makes a big difference for our kids and the people that visit when they're playing, our kids in sports. Along that same line, I'll go to other, other cities like Bellevue and Smamish, and the coaches are getting there early and putting down the lines and, and raking the field. I want to thank your Park Operations Crew, especially your groundskeeper, who made the fields fantastic over in Tibbetts Field all year. They were done great. They were professionally done, and the lines were fantastic. I want you to please pass on the compliments from a coach from the Little League and the Little League itself for the great support that the Parks Department has done in that regard. And then finally, just to, want to thank you for having people present at the Community Resource Fair and at the Welcoming Week. I think Jared was at the Community Resource Fair, and then at Welcoming Week, you're, you had a number of Parks people there as well. They just made it very, very obvious that the Parks Department was tied into the, the success and the health of our community. I just really want to pass on the compliments and appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember De Michele.
Thanks, Jeff. That was a great presentation, and Parks is really the heart of what we do, and I'm sure it's where a, a lot of our residents, this is where they touch city operations. So thank you so much. You mentioned that, yes, I am really involved with Concerts on the Green, and I wanted to just compliment the city staff that supports the Kiwanis and, you know, just does a beautiful job. We invade your offices for eight weeks, and we are always welcomed so nicely and graciously. And also want to thank Brian Birdson and Kathy Jones for the wonderful job they do of just coordinating and just making sure everybody is working together and doing really, really well. I wanted to mention, too, the Isaguas Youth Advisory Board, which is another program that Parks and Community Services does, and that involves so many young people in our community, and they really get leadership development through that program, and so I want to compliment that program as well. You just, what a great team you have, what a great job you do, and what a great representation you, you give for this community. So thank you for everything you do.
Thanks for mentioning that. Yeah, these highlights in no way are everything we do, but appreciate your time and those kind words. I'll pass it along to the team. You should be proud. Amazing, amazing group of professionals in the department. Thanks.
I'll just add plus one to everything you heard. I don't want to repeat anything, but you're right, we have a great team doing great work. So thank you, Director Watling. Next item on our agenda is Good of the Order. So while I'm seeing if anybody has anything, I'm just going to announce some upcoming council meetings. Saturday, September 30th, we've talked to the City Council, will be holding a community listening session on the final day of the Isaguas Farmer's Market. City council members will be available for questions and discussion from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then October 2nd, the next regular city council meeting. There are currently no regular business items on the October 2nd agenda. Does anybody have any Good of the Order items? Councilmember Joe, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. The Peters Sound Regional Council on, on September 29th is holding a RTOD event, a regional transit-oriented development event in Seattle. I don't, it is also virtual, and you can join by hybrid, but going in person is a, a great option because there will be walking tours in the latter half or the afternoon portion of the program highlighting transitory development, and it could help give us some additional ideas for our transitory development that's going in just off of 900 behind the park and ride. So I'll just put that on your radar. You can look at the Peters Sound Regional Council website for more information. Thank you.
Great. And I just want to take a moment to highlight a community event that's coming up. So as you know, we've had Welcoming Week and had a great event on the community lawn that about 500 residents attended. So the Downtown Isaguas Association is actually holding a story stroll, and so having someone read a book page by page to younger children as they walk around the downtown area, and it's a book about cheering. So this page says, "I want to cheer for the people we know, the community that helps us to learn and grow and make our lives better in so many ways, so let's cheer for them all as we go through our days." I just encourage any of the community members, especially those with younger children, to come down as a way to welcome them as another part of the community. So I want to take time for that. I don't have anything else for Good of the Order. So with that, the next item of business is an executive session. The City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss property acquisition for RCW 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren B. The item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. Please note, executive sessions are closed to the public. So we're going to recess into executive session, take a five-minute break. Okay, I'm looking at that. So we'll recess into executive session at 8:41 p.m. I ask the clerk to move the City Council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You're welcome to stay until the, in the meeting until it is reconvened.